Microphones to red.
Yeah. You can always hear those noises, too.
All right. Are we good?
Yeah, we're recording.
All right. Call the meeting into order. We are now going to open up for the Parks and Rec Sales Tax Renewal Workshop. Mr. Keeling.
Thank you, Mayor. Jared Keeling, Assistant, I'm sorry, Assistant City Administrator and Parks and Recreation Director. Let me get this thing. Before we get started, I want to introduce a few people and thank a few people, actually. So, sitting over here to my right, your left, is Christie, Neil, and Stephen from SAP Design Associates. I can't say enough how much we picked the right partner for this project. These guys have been tremendous. Their subconsultants are Olson, Ricky with Olson has been working with us, too. We have had a tremendous team on this all throughout. So, we've been working on this throughout, all of '22, back to '21 through August. So, it's been a long process to get here, and we're so excited to be here. I also want to recognize our staff because they've put in a lot of miles on this, too. Jennifer Mayfield, Joanna Scott, and Garrett Klein are all here representing us tonight. So, excited to be here. Really, we've been waiting on this day for, I'd say, 14 since 2000, excuse me, since 2004. So, that was the last time we passed the capital improvement sales tax for aquatics. So, the day has come. We pay off the Aquatic Center this year, and we pay off the Community Center next year. So, that's what allows us to be here tonight, to present to you these two initiatives, actually. But one of them is for capital improvements, and the other one is for general operations. So, I want to go through the slide deck. Try to get through it in my 6:10. Chris, I'm picking up on a ring, maybe? Or is that just me? Okay.
I hear it as well.
Yeah.
Feedback.
Yeah. Okay. There we go. Maybe that's better. Okay. All right, so... The reason we're here, in addition to paying off the Aquatic Center and the Community Center, is our two sales taxes that are on the ballot, on the agenda tonight. One of them expires in March of 2024. That is the one for our general operations, the quarter cent city sales tax dedicated exclusively for general operations. And the other one, which is dedicated exclusively for capital improvements for Parks, the Parks System, expires in September of 2024. So, the urgency is now, the need to get these things renewed is now. Just talking with SAP a minute ago, if we were to, if we were to go forward and if we were to get these things improved in August, we are already at the summer of 2024. If we wanted to expand the Aquatic Center, hitting that right on the mark. So, that's the reason that they're on the ballot in August, and that's the reason for the urgency of having them in the ballot in August. This is the broad calendar overview. First read tonight, before you tonight for consideration. Second read on April the 19th. If you guys should choose to go forward with these initiatives and place them on the ballot in August, we just have to have the final certification date to the county by 5:24. And then the proposed election day is August 2nd of 2022. Before we get started on the initiatives, I did want to provide just a big old broad umbrella about our revenue and our expenditures. So, and I want to hit on these two sales taxes because on the screen before you is... These two sales taxes represent 42.86% of our overall entire Parks and Recreation Department revenue. It's substantial. Looking at about 1.8 million, a little north of 1.8 million for 2022, what these sales taxes bring in. Now, one of them is dedicated strictly for capital improvements, and in the slides to come, you'll see why, how we spend that exclusively on capital improvements. The other one is for our general operations. But 42.86% of our revenue is a big deal. That's the reason we've been planning this really for about two years. Actually, we knew these were coming, and that's the reason we're bringing them here for you tonight. So, this is just a broad look at our expenditures. The reason that red portion is brought out from the circle is that is our capital. So, in 2022, we're spending roughly $1,046,000 on capital. And when I say capital, that includes our PNI payments for the building, for the Aquatic Center, and a number of other things that, the land payment for the new land, and a number of other things. So, we are doing as we say to the voters. We said we're going to spend it on capital, and we're doing so. In 2022, we actually had enough available money in our all other, from our all other revenue to spend an additional $128,000 in capital. So, this alludes to what I was talking a moment ago. We are going to be debt-free for the first time in a long time at the end of 2023. We're going to be debt-free as a park system. So, it's exciting. We've been waiting a long time, and here we are. So, like I mentioned, the Aquatic Center gets paid off this year, Community Center, and I'm working through Megan. The Community Center is actually wrapped up into a really broader thing for the city. We have three small payments left in 2023, 2024, and 2025. But I'm going to propose that we put all those together in 2023 and take care of them. It's about $311,000 on the Community Center for 2023. And then the other one is Other Park Projects, a small thing for the Senior Center and Playground. And the last one there is the Sawyer Land Purchase, which I referenced a minute ago. So, debt-free by 2023. And when you go get debt-free in our business in Parks and Rec, if you have the revenue sources, you take on more debt to do more for your community because the community has told us this is what they want out of us. So, exciting. Okay, so let's take them one at a time. The first one is the Quarter Cent dedicated for our general operations. And when I say general operations, that really encompasses three things. Personnel, which we have a couple of slides dedicated exclusively to personnel. General operations, that's our general operating expenses, everything from insurance to general supplies, to anything you can imagine. Park maintenance, beautification, and renovations, facility maintenance, upkeep and renovations, and our programming and events. So, that's what we're talking about when we're talking about our general operations. Once again, this sales tax is set to expire in March of 2024. The sales tax generates $918,550 in $2,022. We originally passed this sales tax in 1990. At the time, it was for 14 years. I don't know how they arrived at that number back in 1990. That's a really weird one. But in 2002, voters, once again, it was obviously passed in 1990. In 2002, voters opted to renew it for an additional 20 years. So, that took the tax out to March of 2024. So, if you take out our capital, which this is the same chart I showed a minute ago, if you take out our capital, our operating expenditures, just to turn the lights on, do everything, pay our people, keep everything pristine and good and for the public, is $3,283,000 roughly. So, this sales tax, this Quarter Cent sales tax generates approximately 27.98% of our operating, of our revenue to pay for our operating expenses. So, a substantial chunk of that goes towards our operating expenses. The other 72.02% is made up of Green County Park Sales Tax, that we have property taxes, program and event fees, admissions to the Aquatic Center, concession revenue. But this tax represents 27.98% of our operating expenses. So, this slide's got a lot going on, but I love it because it details everything we do as part of our operations. And I'm not going to bore you to death with reading it all, but the first three slides are dedicated to our personnel. So, we have recreation personnel. When I say recreation, actually, it's recreation and aquatics. But we have nine full-time employees there, five part-time, I'm sorry, seven part-time total, and about 150 to 170 seasonal employees. Those are typically speaking, Republic, almost all Republic, high school and college-age kids that work everything from a lifeguard to an umpire to a referee to a gatekeeper to concession worker. Our Park Maintenance Division, we now have 285 acres of parks. I'm so proud of that. That is a huge number for a city our size. We have, yeah, 10 city parks encompassing 285 acres. So, imagine finished mowing 285 acres. It's insane, and weed eating, and keeping it looking good. So, we have a fleet of personnel to do that, and they're dedicated to their jobs, and they love what they do. But we have eight full-time employees that do that, one part-time, and 11 seasonals. Those seasonals being weed eaters, mowers, things of that nature. And then on our facility maintenance side, we, there's two things at play there. We have eight full-timers and two seasonals. We actually in a little bit of a unique situation here where we maintain all the municipal facilities, but the work done at municipal facilities other than ours is reimbursed directly from the city. So, but we ourselves have a lot of facilities. We have the Rec Center, the Activities Building, the Aquatic Center facilities, the concession stands, the outdoor restrooms. So, our facility maintenance crews are responsible for the upkeep and maintaining all of those to our level, which if you walk into the Community Center, which I'm so proud of, that building was built in 2003. We have a lot of guests come in and say, "Is this pretty new?" It's just the truth. Now, the materials chosen, SAP did that, speak, they work well. Split-face block, I've seen them done in drywall, you get holes in the walls. But that building looks brand-new, but it's because of our Facility Maintenance Division that keeps those things so nice. So, general operating expenditures, everything you can imagine to make things look good, keep the lights on, keep the doors on, open, insurance to our liability, fleet insurance, utilities, office supplies, park maintenance supplies, you can read the rest. And then finally, our special events and programming. Now, most of our programs and most of our events are paid through, through user fees, most. There are some that are not. Have a Blast being one. Obviously, the city takes a tremendous amount of pride in Have a Blast, but that's also about a $75,000 annual expenditure. There's some others, there's some outliers, Easter egg hunts. I'm probably not thinking of all of them, senior programming, some of the other ones like that. But most of them are paid through, directly through user fees. So, that's just a snapshot of our operations. I want to break down personnel just a little bit because it is such a large chunk of our budget. The totals represent, the total number of employees are pretty impressive. I say impressive, we are not overstaffed. I take a lot of pride in not being overstaffed. I want our workers to be out there working their tails off, and they do. They take a tremendous amount of pride in working their tails off. So, we got 25 full-time employees, 10 permanent part-time employees, and 163 to 183 seasonal employees. And I think Jennifer wrote it on there, or I did. I think it's important to note that how big of an employer we are of the high school and college-age kids in the Republic area is huge. So, we're proud of that. A lot of those kids come to us as a sophomore in high school, and they stay with us all the way through to senior in college, so it's good stuff. Okay, I'm going to pause there for a minute. That's for general operations. So, is there any questions on the general operations? Okay. So, now the fun stuff. So, these renderings you're getting ready to see are incredible. Like, I shared at the banquet the other night. I get the gooseies every single time, and I just showed one of them there. But this stuff, I'm telling you, if you're in the Parks and Recreation business, it's just phenomenal. And again, SAP and Olson have done a tremendous job. So, here we are for the Capital Improvement Sales Tax, and you'll notice this one will have about 20 slides where the other one had about five. So, this is the fun stuff here. So, this is how we pay for our large capital improvements. If you go back to the citizen surveys for the last three or four years, we've heard over and over, this is the three projects we want. Now, the order is very, has varied a little bit, but this is what they want. They want expansion of the Aquatic Center to include the Lazy River. They want a development of a large sports complex. If you, Joanna, how many soccer teams we have right now? We have 81 soccer teams playing literally everywhere you can possibly imagine. JR Martin Park, Root Field, the schools, yeah. So, we are just, like, we're grabbing land to play soccer, baseball, softball. We have, give me a number, close. 130 teams playing on six fields that our crews have developed into fairly nice fields, but there's 14 feet of elevation drop from field one to field six. If it tells you, we kind of built those at a cow pasture. But they're nice, they're nice, but we want to make it incredibly nice. And then the other one, of course, is the JR Martin Park Amphitheater. I'm sorry, the Farmers Park and Community Event Space. You'll see when we get to that, but the idea is to have a place where the Republic community can come together and celebrate. Whether that be a local nonprofit event, whether that be at Pumpkin Days, whether that be at Have a Blast, whether that be Farmers Markets on Saturdays, similar to the Farmers Park on South Springfield. That's the vibe we're going for there. So, this tax, sorry, this tax passed in November of 2023, primarily funding the Aquatic Center, which will be clearly stated in there, was for capital improvements for the Aquatic Center and various other projects. So, the city's had great favor. We've had a lot of growth in our sales tax since 2003. So, what we've done, and this is just a summary of the tax, is what I just said. Passed in November of 2003, set to expire in 2024. Year, to date, it's estimated about 9.4 million. But this next slide, I love. I just love it because this is what we've done with the money. So, true to our word, we built the premier aquatic center in southwest Missouri. And still today, 19 years later, it is still the premier aquatic center in southwest Missouri. People come, they flock to it. If it's hot, they come. A lot of that is because we're still outdoing the competition. We still really don't have any, a lot of competition in municipal aquatics. We just don't have it. We're proud of that. We're proud of how well we keep it. We also want to keep that. We also want to stay ahead of the curve on that. So, we spent $6 million, if you include the financing, to bring about the Aquatic Center. But these other projects are the ones that I'm really proud of because the sales tax generated more than we thought, and we were able to do some more stuff than just the Aquatic Center. So, in 2014, we built the AMP, Republic Veterans Memorial, and new bathrooms at JR Martin Park. That was total about $750,000. If you go to the AMP on any given day, there's going to be about 250 to 300 people out there every single move that we show. We sold out 800 tickets in eight hours for opening day of the AMP. So, that facility has been tremendously well-received. 2008-ish is a promise of consolidation in Brookline, with Brookline. We purchased 44 acres from Jury and established Brookline Park. It's amazing to see that park right now. This is where we do the dino shoots, and we just got a Bigfoot. Yeah, Bigfoot, he's great. He's in the lobby of our Community Center. So, but that park has something all the rest of our parks don't have. It's just literally a nature park. There's streams, there's anything you can imagine out there, nature trails. It's just a place to go unwind, get out of city proper, if you will, and just go out there and unwind. And if you go out there on weekends, that place is packed. It's just awesome. So, Owen Park, proud of that one as well. I guess it would be on the easterly side of our city. We didn't have a park over there, but we purchased nine acres for $45,000, I think roughly, in 2012 or 14. We put a playground in there, come along with a three-quarters mile trail through a grant and some various other amenities. So, proud of that one as well. Added pavilions to Miller Park, JR Martin Park. And then the last one represented on there was the one we did last fall. We purchased the new 136-acre property along James River with a mile frontage. So proud of that property. The Parks and Recreation System has, will pay a million of that, roughly a million. The rest of it is paid through ARPA, the CIS Fund, and the General Fund actually bought 10 acres of it for future development. So, I think this is just a testament to say we did what we said we were going to do with the money. And oh, by the way, we did a lot more. And I think the things we've done is make this community stand out like none other. I think it's just really good stuff, so, of course, I am biased. Okay. So, these are the three major projects that we're talking about, and those are just snapshots of what we're looking at, and we'll get into each of more detail. But the one on my left, your right, state-of-the-art sports complex. The one in the middle is an addition of a Lazy River and some other things to the Aquatic Center. And the one on the right is the Community Event Space we talked about at JR Martin Park. So, taking these one at a time. Expansion of the Republic Aquatic Center. So, that's our existing facility. From day one, we knew the land was going to be there, and the area was going to be there to expand to the east. So, what SAP has done, and the only thing we told them is, "We got to have a Lazy River." I mean, we got to have a Lazy River. We wanted one. And the other thing we told them is, "We don't want the Lazy River to be small. We don't want you to be running around on a rack wheel," right? So, there's a million ways to make that thing look big, but not only did they make it look big, it is big. So, it's 575 feet long, 10 feet wide. We're proposing to add two additional slides on the east side as well. One of those is a tube slide where you could go literally right down the slide and onto the Lazy River. The other one's a speed slide where it wouldn't be on a tube. An additional small depth entry area. We have one of these now. It's tremendously popular. We would add another one. And the thing that I'm probably most excited about is additional party zones and cabanas for rentals. If we've heard one thing about our facility over and over is we would like a little bit more private experience there. So, when Chris Parks was still here, he went toured a facility in Florida. They had, I think it was 14 cabanas, and they said they rent out every single day, every single hour. And obviously, there's a good revenue generator. We also want to go into the party business more than we are. Our party's down there, as you can imagine, it's the place to party for young kids. But we want to really go in all that, build pavilions, build more, even private cabanas for party to take advantage of that market. So, I understand Neil does most of this, right, Neil? So, Neil's the man on the artist work, and Neil, you do a spectacular job. So, this is just a rendering, looking west from the east, like bird's-eye view. Obviously, our existing facility would be at the top of your screen. It's just special. It really is. Now, it is conceptual only, but as of right now, we think we can accomplish everything in that picture for right around $6 to $7 million. That's today's dollars. If we would be able to do this, and say we open by 2024, I believe they would flock, absolutely flock here. And not that we're about having people flock here, but we are in the business of creating tourism to this town. And we do that already, but imagine having this. Your closest thing is Whitewater, and I'll just say, your closest thing is Whitewater, so I'll just leave it right there. So, this is just some different renderings of the space. This would be taken out by Miller Road, close to the, what was proposed to be the new concession stand, guard room and such. And then this would be taking advantage of the elevation on our current, looking down at the Lazy River. We're going to, we're proposing to include terraces with large flat spaces where these private cabanas could sit, where you would lounge, and you essentially would be able to look down on the Lazy River if you were a mom or dad or whatever. Look down on it and just see your kids playing. So, whereas I think, I don't know how much feet a drop is in there, but it's a pretty decent-sized drop. So, the idea would be a place to chill, a place to be away from the action, but also a place to still be able to see your children while they're playing on the Lazy River. You're actually doing okay on time, I think. Okay, so, moving on to the development of the 136-acre park, it's actually 125 if you take out the land the city's going to use for development. So, we purchased this last fall with keeping in mind that this was going to be the place where we wanted to put our sports complex. We looked at this property eight years ago. We were able to make it happen last fall through a lot of favor, through the ARPA funding, through increased sales tax revenue. It's just really worked out perfectly, actually. So, development of this park and turning it into what we want it to be. And I believe, once again, SAP has nailed it. So, I just want to make sure everyone knows where this is at. As seen on the screen there, it's where the star, Amazon, it's over further to the west. But that mile frontage right there on James River will serve us incredibly well. Advertising, marketing, there's a water tower there already. We won on that water tower, Andrew. There's a billboard there already. Exactly.
He's got to sell you some space.
Exactly, for a small fee, I'm sure. But not only do we have marketing materials on the property, the property itself is marketing. So, if you look at the west side of that property, the elevation, you can actually see down on the property pretty good from James River. I think I've driven it 95,000 times just to look at it. But you're going to be able to see down on it, and everything that we have in these plans are with that in mind. Like, what are you going to be, visually see framed from James River, once you go through, I guess it would be eastbound James River. You can see it westbound a little bit from eastbound, though. So, this one isn't exciting to look at as a renderings, but this is just the overall site layout if we did a complete build-out. It's cool. It's a lot, and it's just awesome. And I can tell you right now, and I'm not exaggerating, we could use all of it today, every single bit of it. I have no doubt in my mind we would pack that thing out. But reality is, we can't afford it all right now, at least internally. But the overall concept and the overall plan for the 125 acres includes 10 baseball softball fields, turf infield on all, two large championship fields, large entry pavilions, two of them on the east and the west sides, obviously concession stands, other support facilities, restrooms and such. Eight soccer multi-use fields, goes back to the number of teams we have and the number of teams will continue to grow. But we also do lacrosse. We also do flag football. We also do other things out there we could play on these multi-sport fields. So, the idea there would be upon complete build-out to have, are these, you call them four superfields or eight? How do you reference those? Yes, four superfields, which really make up eight regulation-sized soccer fields. So, turfing those, if we can, we believe we can, at least initially in Phase One, at least one of the pods or one of the superfields. And then turfing the infield of baseball softball. But there's also a lot of other stuff going on. We challenged our consultants, we want this thing to be an incredible park, and there just happens to be a sports park there. And I think upon arrival, and if I could get this guy to work here. So, this would be the main arrival from what would be the new realigned MM 103, whatever it is. But as you can see, as you come into this entryway, you're coming into a park. You're not coming into right away soccer fields, right away baseball fields, and I really, really like that. One thing that I didn't miss, and it is on there, we also desire to, and this is kind of true to who we are, we also desire to put the fast-forward button on pickleball. So, pickleball is exploded. It's just absolutely crazy right now, the amount of people playing pickleball. I was at Metter Park three nights ago. Every single court they had, completely packed, every single court they had had a waiting line. But we're experiencing this already internally at the Community Center. We play Monday through, seems like Sunday, and it's just packed all the time. But what we do have, too, is an incredible resource that is in our Republic community. Renee, correct? She desires to help us here, but create massive regional Midwest tournaments in pickleball. And what we have there is 12 courts laid out in that three, three little, three sets of, three sets of four, 12 courts total. So, this would be the eastbound view on James River. So, with intent, the pond and the baseball fields and the stadium one with the best view. And then obviously, a little further to the west, you start in with the soccer fields and things. So, again, Neil did great work on this, but this is the kind of stuff that it really excites you right here. Like, David said it one time, and it was a great take, and I never even thought about it. Like, five or six years ago, if you were to exit on James River from 44 and head into Springfield, think about what that looked like five or six years ago. It was literally lifeless. It was. There wasn't a thing out there. But now, what do you have? You have Convoy Pope, you have Amazon, you have a million things. Throw that bad boy in there? I mean, the life thing goes, like, through the roof. So, I think it could be an incredible, like, what in the world is going on, Republic, it's already there, but imagine if that was there. So, and this all goes to advertise our community, gateway to our community, and saying, "Well, Republic, what's going on in Republic?" So, tremendously excited about that rendering alone. I think it's just awesome what SAP was able to do. So, we can't afford it all from day one. We just can't. But what we can do is phase the project, so that's what we're proposing to do. Now, granted, we still have upwards of 18 months, perhaps, or longer, to explore other funding options. And we haven't even really started this. I think, actually, David has a little bit on the backside, but I have not. So, we've got potential to have sponsorships. We have potential to, or other types of partnership. But this is strictly on what we could potentially afford as a Parks and Recreation Department. So, our Phase One would be roughly 12 and a half to 14 million, and it's what you see there, not grayed out. Five baseball softball fields, four soccer fields, two of the super pods or whatever they're called, and 12 pickleball courts. So, that would be an incredible start for us. I don't want to diminish what that would, alone would do for us. It would be incredible. So, this is what we're proposing to do if we can't get any additional funds. And you want to talk about relieve a lot of our current issues, but also we could begin having larger-scale weekend tournaments to generate sports tourism in our community, which we already do. But on the athletic side, we just don't have the facilities that warrant to travel here. We just don't have them. One thing I do want to say while we're here is, we have met with Rob Phillips, Stan, the folks from Springfield Sportstown, I get it wrong every time, Betty and Bobby Allison Sportstown. We've met with them repeatedly over the last two years. We were actually entertaining the idea of partnering with them. But what, in our meetings most recently, with the last three or four meetings, they are very, very interested in joint mega tournaments. And I think it might be three minutes by road, four minutes by road from one to the other. Imagine the amount of incredible coolness that could have, like, hey, where are you playing? Well, I'm playing at Betty or Bobby, or I'm playing over Republic, but they're within three or four minutes of one another. And also, the amount of sports tourism that would hit our economy would be incredible. So, this is what we're proposing on the sports complex, a Phase One approach, a phased approach, if you will, inclusive of the five fields, the four soccer fields and the pickleball. And that is just the image with the Phase Two grayed out, is what we would be looking at for Phase One. This is just a, our entry level, our entry pavilion on the, would be the west side. So, you would be walking through this main entry pavilion, and to your left would be the, I call them wagon wheel, the baseball softball complex, and to your right would be the soccer complex. And we would ultimately have two of these, one on the west side and one on the east side. Some of those rendering there is to your right, those were taken at Elizabeth Town, Kentucky. We have done a lot, a lot of research, and we keep coming back to Elizabeth Town, Kentucky. It is absolutely fantastic. It's called E-Town Sports. We visited ourselves, talked to their director. There's everything about that facility we love, and you can even see in our designs, we patterned a lot of our stuff after that. And one of those is these grand entry pavilions. You get a, like, a feeling of arrival. Like, hey, I'm here, I'm going to walk through this pavilion, and I'm going to go play my tournament. I'm going to go play my league night, and it's a special feeling. They did a lot of really cool stuff on the concrete with stamped concrete with sports themes or whatever, but it's just incredible, so. Okay, and the last one is, this one actually ranked the highest in our latest citizen survey, and I understand why. It appeals to everyone, from a toddler all the way to a senior. It just has a real cool vibe to it. So, Farmers Markets on Saturdays, special events, local nonprofit events. We've already moved Pumpkin Days there. We desire to move Kiwanis there. They have a desire to move it there. Have a Blast. It's just, it's center city. You got the... have a blast. It's just, it's center city, you got the rail there, the rail, it chew-chews, but man, does that thing kind of cool, too. The kids love it. So, it's good stuff. So, this is present day. In 2014, we came along with the amphitheater. We, we started to give it kind of a modern vibe, but what we want to do is really go all in on that modern vibe, and kind of begin to get rid of the dated stuff and the stuff that doesn't belong in there. So, I'm gonna say this out loud, and to the tennis people out there, we are not getting rid of tennis, but we are gonna move tennis. Tennis no longer belongs right there, it just doesn't belong there. So, the plans you will see has the removal of tennis courts, and then we will, we will relocate those to Miller Park. Okay, so this is just the overall bird's eye view of the development. You can begin to see what we're hoping to accomplish here. What we want to do is create this incredibly cool spot up at the, at the top elevation of the park, overlooking the park. So, a place to have all those things we have, a monster plaza area to host the events in the farmers' markets and things. So, this is, again, just kind of a bird's eye rendering view of it, looking at the space. The, the structure you see there to the, to the top left is an open-air pavilion for the farmers' market. The other structure you see there closer to the amphitheater would have concessions, storage, and things like that to support the amph events, but also to support every other event we have out there. We actually might entertain the idea of a tenant in there for lunch. We haven't got that far yet, but we actually love the So, again, I'm sorry, I missed us. No, I didn't. So, again, we would be looking at, whoa, I'm going way backwards. We'd be looking at a phased approach on this. A total buildout, I have that in, yeah, total buildout was about, about three to four million. We'd be looking at a phased approach. The reason for the phased approach here is, is twofold, really. A, and again, I haven't really talked to Andrew about this greatly, but Public Works can do, hopefully do some of this workforce. This is the one project where I believe they could do quite a bit of work for the asphalt and stuff like that. The other one is, we really, really believe we have a chance to land substantial grants for this one. Just because of what it will do for our community, grants tend to lean towards approvals if you can prove that they will serve the community as a whole. And this one checks every single box there is. So, as part of this, and I probably missed it, we're looking at an outdoor classroom. Schools already expressed interest, if not a financial commitment to helping us with the outdoor classroom, just because it's adjacent to all the schools. But, this one checks a lot of boxes for grants. So, the amenities, you can look at them there on the right-hand side, but basically, this goes back to a cool place to have events. So, a phased approach, 1.5 to 2 million on the first phase of it, and I believe it'll get us to where we need to be. It'll be a really, really good start. So, just some renderings from ground level, and the renderings on the right are some of the things we already do or that we desire to do. We, and I missed the holiday lighting display. This is actually one of the biggest reasons we're doing this. We desire to, from the Thanksgiving to the end of the year, have one of the largest walk-through Christmas lighting displays in southwest Missouri, and that's why we're calling it the Loop. But, basically, a half-mile to three-quarter mile walk-through holiday lighting display, and we're gonna use that plaza area on Fridays and Saturdays for food trucks, hot cocoa, everything you can imagine. But also, to have a couple of mega Christmas events, like the one there in the middle. We did these probably 10 years back, but we really didn't have the right venue for it. But, I believe now, if we were able to create the venue, the people would, they would obviously flock to the holiday lighting display, but they could flock to our events out there as well. So, it's just a rendering looking, I believe it's to the north, if you're looking down on that. The, the play features there are cool. It's part of the modern, modern vibe we want to bring to the park. The park features an awesome playground, but that awesome playground was built in 2001. It's dated, it's looking a little old. Our, our people that do our playground safety inspections, who are certified, say it's, it's almost at the end of life. So, what we want to do is come in with these unique kind of cool play elements that you're like, I want to go swing on that, I want to go climb on that. And I think, I think that one right there in the middle is on, in Rogers Arkansas. We want to create a lot of, a difference type of thing, other than the standard primary-color playground that we have a lot of in Republic. So, big picture, this is what we're looking at for the original, for the three projects, keeping in mind phased approach on sports complex and phased approach on the J.R. Martin Park project, and then the full buildout on the Aquatic Center, somewhere in the neighborhood of 20 to 23 million. So, how do we get there? How do we pay for it? The answer is, the tax can pay for it. So, running the numbers and running the projections, and there's a whole lot of numbers up there, but assuming by 2024, our quarter cent hits 1.15 million, which I believe that it will, and I believe that actually might be a hair conservative. And, and assuming 2% growth annually, that tax, you can see the numbers, how they're extrapolated out over the 25 years. So, that would allow us potentially to borrow amount of the 20 to 23 million, which was referenced in the last slide. And then, your annual PNI payments are there to the right, anywhere from 1.2 to 1.4 million annually. So, that, the tax would get us there for paying for the, the existing debt. Now, what I will say is, you never know what sales tax rates will do. You just never know. If they were to grow substantially more than the 2%, we could potentially come back and work on the additional phases down the road, whether that be three, four, five, six, seven years down the road. But, that's a conservative number. That's actually the number we usually put in the budget, if not 3%. It's always conservative, and, and to the favor bestowed on Republic, we've actually had some really good sales tax years, and we're trending in that way this year as well. But, you always do this on a conservative basis. So, just saying, with our status quo, assuming 2% growth, we would be able to make the annual payments, probably with a little bit of comfort in there, too, which would be nice. So, there's a lot of verbiage on there, vetted through legal, appreciate the work of Megan. This is actually copied from several different municipalities, but the reason we're doing both of these at once is, A, to not confuse the voter, and to be totally transparent. I would, last thing I would want to do is run one out there in August, and then run another one out there next August, and they're like, didn't we just do that? So, both of them expire in 2024, they're both in, they're both sunsetting soon, so why not do them at the same time? And just, we're gonna be as clear as we possibly can, clarity pillar of why we're doing it at the same time and what they're for. So, we even went there in the ballot language, like, this tax, the local parks tax is for this, and it funds this. This tax, the quarter cent capital improvement is for this, and these are the projects we're looking to do for, with the money. So, the ballot language, I think is good. I think it's, I, I hope it's clear when people would potentially go to the polls. And that's it, that's all I have. So, with that, I was hoping for 610, so it actually ended well. So, I will entertain any questions. Did I forget anything, staff?
Questions from council?
What about the potential of, like, a decent-sized dog park? I know a lot of people contacted me, and I would, been thrown out there several times.
So, I love that. Because the reason I love it is because we've talked about it for two months. And I think what, what, what we have to do is find a location. We have two, so we've actually, the consultants are already aware of this. We've given them two locations to potentially look at locating a dog park. And we believe we could get it done for somewhere around, a nice one, for somewhere around 100 to 125,000. I'm talking a really nice one, because I think people would demand a really nice one. So, I think it 100%, that's why I love the question, could be folded into this. I, I think it belongs. We were just flushing out the property, what it would look like and the cost, but I think, I could definitely think it could be folded into the capital improvement sales tax.
Do you know which park, by any chance, or just the ones that have been tossed around?
Sure. The two ones we're looking at are within Miller Park, where the old lagoon used to be, or our new property, which is off of 174 behind Pentecost, something Pentecostal Church. There's five acres over there. The consultants has told us, you need around, anywhere from three to five acres for a really good dog park, because you have to divide up small dogs, large dogs, and all that stuff like that. So, those are the two properties we would be looking at. We've pretty much exhausted all of our other properties, but I think either one of those makes sense. I really do. So, but I, to your point, that's why I love the question, is I definitely think it could be folded into the capital improvement sales tax.
Because I think that might be one of your selling points, too. If you, if, let's toss that out there, too, to let them know, hey, you know, this will be for also, for, you know, we'll be building a dog park and everything. So, people might rally around that, too.
Yeah, I think it makes sense.
Thank you, sir. Other questions?
Yes, sir.
So, I'm assuming the loan payments, 25-year amortization, and match that on there. I'm not well-versed with, you know, government funding on there. Is it typically, is that rate fixed for the entire period? How do you, how do you fund, what's the mechanism to fund the?
That's correct. That was projected today at 3.5%. The, the percentage holds firm. Now, you can level pay the debt, or you can back in the debt a little bit. Ours potentially might be back ended a little bit, assuming sales tax growth, but it would be, that was shot at 3.5. I actually don't know what the current rate would be. What did we get the most recent wastewater funds for?
299.
299. So, it's actually a little high on that projection, so.
Those are fixed throughout the, at the time of day?
Thanks, thank you. Other questions?
Yes, sir.
On J.R. Martin Park, I see where you laid out the walking trail in a different configuration than what it is now.
Sure.
Now, are you planning on totally doing away with Park Street?
Yeah, so, good catch, Mr. Wilson. So, what we have agreed with the school is, we would let them have use of our lane there for the, the upcoming, yeah, and then after that, hopefully, we'll have this done. But, for safety reasons, for aesthetic reasons, for looks reasons, for every reason imaginable, we want to get rid of that lane in the middle of the park. And what we've worked through with Jason at the school is how we can queue students from the new early childhood through that existing, well, through what would be the new asphalt drive and the loop. And Neil and Kristi and all those have figured that out in talking with the school, like, how we could queue all those cars. So, that's the reason you see the parking lot expansion further into the park, and also the rounding in the thing next to the early childhood center. But, yes, to your point, we're gonna do away with the road.
So, how would the cars go into the school dropping off, or would they come back out on, on what street?
Sure. They're essentially be, they would be coming in off of Hines and exiting on Hines. And let me get back there, Mr. Wilson. So, this would probably show at the best, and I'll, I'll get my cursor out. But, they, they come in here, go down to this half aroundabout, whatever you call it, U-turn, and exit right back on Hines. Now, the things that I can answer for Andrew is, would they be allowed to have another right there on Hines, or they go out the same way?
Yes, I think it functionally would allow for another one.
Okay.
So, it'd be right in and right out onto Hines?
Well, I could, I'm not a traffic guy, but it could be a left-in, right?
Depends on what direction.
Depends on what direction you're coming from. Yes. That, yes.
Let's stop. I was gonna go sideways. No, I'm joking, sorry.
But, to your point, it's a great pickup. We, we have worked all that out through the school, because they have indicated they could have somewhere around 250 to 350 cars just servicing the EC Center alone on, on pickup and drop-off, so.
I know there'd be a lot.
Yeah. But, yes, we need to get rid of the road. It's, it's, we, we've had it closed down forever, but for one year, we've agreed to let the school use it to access the EC in hopes of getting this done prior to the 2023, 24 school year.
Yes, ma'am.
Jared, this is incredible.
Thank you, ma'am.
I already love this community, but this makes me love it so much more. It's very exciting.
Thank you. A lot of work, and a lot of people there, but thank you very much.
This is, this is exciting. How are you feeling about the reception of the renewal of the sales tax? Are you feeling confident about that?
I do. Just because, well, there's a lot of reasons for it. But, I think, and it's favored, but we have a lot of confidence in our community. I mean, you can see it in the stuff we do. We could run out, and we probably have painting llamas, and it goes crazy. Because people know what we do, we do it well. And that speaks to our staff, I really do. But, I also think it goes back to being good stewards of money. So, if you look at what we've done and what we continue to do, we're pretty solid stewards of their money. We take care of what we have. That's what we hear every single time. If you come to the Aquatic Center, you're coming there because it's clean, because you have nice chairs, because the community center looks great, because the bathrooms are clean. I think the early indication from what I received is, it's, it's positive. But, that's, that comes with a lot of history long before me, too. But, I think, overall, the Parks and Recreation Department has done a really good job of being good stewards of taxpayer money. We've leveraged taxpayer money for grants every chance that we get. We want to do more. Grants are exhausting, though. They really are, in, in researching and administrating, but we're doing all we can with grants. The trail at Owen, the trail at Miller, the trail at Martin, all paid for by grants. That, we were leveraging our local sales tax dollars to get federal dollars for grants, so. But, to your question, yes, I, I do. I feel pretty good about it. I really do. Yeah.
This is a, kind of a unusual question, and if you don't have these facts, it's fine. These originally were passed back in 2003, is that correct?
The capital improvements, correct, yeah.
What sort of voter turnout did you have in 2003, and do you know what it passed by?
I don't, but I do know it was like 72%. I don't know the turnout, though.
All right, so it was a pretty overwhelming majority of it?
Yeah, yeah.
For both?
I'm sorry.
For both?
I do not know the other one. I don't, I just remember that, the other one, because I hadn't quite come here yet, and they were, put the Aquatic Center on the ballot, and I was like, I want to monitor that. And I'm like, whoa, that's a wide margin. But, I don't know the turnout. I do not.
Okay. Other questions?
Couple, yes. So, are we, so are we expecting to do upgrades or do upgrades at Miller Park and Garoot Field, or will they just not be used anymore once this phase one and two is done?
So, Garoot Field will become practice-only for soccer, and then we're gonna pull all of our leagues games out at the sports park. What was your other question, Miller?
Yeah, Miller Park, I mean.
So, Miller, for baseball softball, we envision that would be for probably eight and under. And then, when you get older, and you graduate, you graduate to the, the bigger field. So, that's our vision for the, the baseball softball complex on that. The move of the tennis courts would be going to Miller Park. We, we think we've identified the exactly right location, we've got to solidify that, and then potential dog park there, maybe.
And also notice that, on the aquatic one, would you have to reroute part of the walking trail that's out there?
Yeah, so, they've showed that in their renderings. I can't remember how many linear feet we'd have to reroute, but one thing it would not do was, would be shorten the trail, it'd just be rerouting it around the expansion. Yeah, I think, I can't remember if that was in there or not, Chris, but we would have to reroute slightly.
Can you pass out hard hats for all the frisbee golf?
Yeah, so.
It's dangerous.
We love frisbee golf, but we do believe that that will potentially move. And we want to keep it, because it's, it's a free activity, and it's actually really fun. But, with all the development, with all the growth within Miller Park, especially if we would potentially land a dog park there, tennis courts and things like that, it no longer fits. But, the last thing we would ever do would, would be to get rid of it, because you saw it during COVID. I mean, and you actually saw use of our parks skyrocket during COVID, but disc golf skyrocketed during COVID, because you could get outside, you'd be by yourself, you could space apart, but people love disc golf, too. But, I ultimately believe it may not no longer fit in Miller down the road, so.
You hit on grants a moment ago. What about donations? Any, any corporate donations? Any looking in that direction? Could that speed things up for the phase two?
Yeah, I'll be completely frank, I'm gonna rely on David a lot for that. He's got more connected than I am, but I do believe it's entirely possible. But, we just have to be careful there, because sometimes with donations comes expectations. But, I've seen, I've seen it done a lot, a lot, in park systems. Like, people would slap their name on something, and they want nothing in return, other than to be a good partner in the community. So, we will pursue that 100%, yeah.
Okay. Mr. Mayor?
Sir.
What I will tell you, though, when it comes to private partnerships, and we've done several, participated in several, you're not gonna get any, it's, it's hard to go and market the projects, even though we have these conceptuals, until it's presented to the community, because most of the time, when you get philanthropy and people involved, it's, is the community itself supporting these projects financially, versus going and saying, hey, we have 32 million or 50 million with the projects, but we're not willing to contribute anything to those. So, after the ballot measures, should it be something this, this, this body decides to place to the voters, once that's done after August, depending on the outcome, then, then that's whenever I would begin to approach different individuals about potentially partnering, because we have something to go to them with. I will tell you that I, we've already been approached, and I've already been approached, with one that would like to name one of the, the large-scale project, but I want to see the overall part of that. And Jared just now probably heard that for the first time.
Second time, second.
So, but I did tell them, and I did assure his team that we've put our, you know, but we've got to start here first, and what, and our community supports it, that it's easier to go to someone that would like to participate, because there's, there's a number of folks. Someone is flying in, I think even this week, to look at the site. And so, we are working that side of it, that it's like, it really depends on what we do at this body and what the citizens say. Because if the citizens voted no, then you can imagine, like, well, if your own community doesn't support it, it's gonna be very difficult to support it. But, I think that we've got a lot there. And having these different options provides different options where people, maybe with a family name, may want to put their name on that park or something of that nature. But, again, that would all come back to this body. But, yeah, that's a great question.
Sir.
Mr. Mayor.
Sorry.
Let's, Mr. Dykman, go ahead.
Okay. I'm correct on the fact that the, if the ballot measure passed, that it's strictly discontinuing the tax we have, it's not any additional, correct?
Yeah, sometimes I forget the most important thing, and I'm glad you hit on it. So, these are renewals.
That's what I thought, but I heard.
They're existing. We will push that in every informational thing we have, but they are renewals. Good catch, Mr. Dykman. They are renewals, and they would come discontinuing existing sales taxes, no sales tax increase, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. [inaudible].
I apologize.
And I apologize if I missed it. But is there an estimated cost of this election?
It all depends on if there's other entities, but I understand there is a primary, right? At the same time. So Laura, I'll defer, but last August, did we have anybody else on the ballot?
I think we had one other, so it was, I would venture to say between 17 and 30,000.
With other people on the ballot though.
With the shared ballot.
Yeah. I, I think our bill last August, and I, and I'll look this up, but I want to say it was around 15 to 16,000. With that, but there was something else on the ballot though, so. Oh, actually there was there, I can't even remember. I'll, I'll get that number for you.
But the individual ballot was 70,000 if we were alone.
Okay, yeah.
So I do know that it was shared in our portion of that. So because it is a primary election, I think that they share the lion's share because that's where the majority of it, because it's both Republican and Democrat on that primary. So it's shared amongst multiple parties. I don't think it'll even be that much for us on this one.
I'll be happy to get that information for you.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, Mr. Franklin?
No. Sorry. And I may have missed it earlier, I'm sorry I was late. So the, the debt that's going away, approximately a million, a million dollars a year in annual debt service?
Yeah, so for the last 15 years, for the community center and aquatic center, that debt has been somewhere around 700 to 800,000 dollars, somewhere in there. But we have other park projects, so you're approaching about 850,000, somewhere in there.
Okay, yeah. So the outstanding debt going away was about a million. And so it's, it's not much of an increase over the existing debt that's going away on the lower end.
That's correct. And we, and I can't remember exactly what point you walked in, Mr. Gurkey, but what we've done though is with the extra sales tax revenue, we've completed a lot of additional projects. And to the one, we went, on the ballot it said Aquatic Center and other projects. We did the Aquatic Center and we were able to do seven or eight more major projects as well, so.
And then you, you 2% on the growth, annual growth for the sales tax. What, what was the last couple of years?
So, great. So 2021 ended at 16 some percent. So far, year to date, we're doing as, good as well, but you never know. You just never know. I mean, obviously growth has exploded here, residential has exploded, business has exploded. I don't know if we'll be able to maintain that, but we've had it, we had a good year in 2021. Previous 2021, we probably experienced anywhere from three to six or seven percent, so. But we had a really good 21.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
It's a great question, Councilman Gurkey, because I think that's what we were talking about at the development meeting the other night. I think there's a direct correlation as you continue to partner with the development community when it comes to households, when it comes to commercial. Part of that is still indicative upon us. So I think there is, the market drives that, but I think it's still the ability of this, this group and the staff to continue to facilitate an environment that will allow the development. Because if not, you have to go conservative. Because as you saw the correlation between when the city was making it somewhat difficult in that arena, I think it's very much about how we continue to vision, how MM builds out. Because as MM builds out in 2025, 2026, it continues to create an economic impact. I think you saw the development as, as to what we're overall doing. But what's going on is driving our sales tax growth as well. And we have to maintain a vision of what that needs to look like moving forward and continue to do that.